Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Overman. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning. Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance invocation given by Chaplain Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the great people that are here to be recognized for various reasons this morning, particularly those young people that are here. Pray that you will guide them and bless them as they grow to be future leaders in our community. I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions today. And as always, I pray for members of our armed forces and our first responders, that you may guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I give all these thanks and ask for all these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have three proclamations, one commendation, and we're going to start off with the first proclamation by Commissioner Kemp.
I am so honored, very honored to give this proclamation, especially today. I had worked at Bay Area Legal Services, in fact, closely with Jenna Hudson, Donna Freyall, I'm not sure which, and Dick Waltman for many years. And so also, I wondered if my A., Laura Lawson, who also worked at legal services, I'd, oh, here, why don't you come join me, Laura? She's also done numerous hours and still continues to do so in pro bono work. But I'm so proud to be, to offer this award this morning. I'd like you all to come up, including Chief Judge Figueroa. Join me here. The legal profession does so much pro bono work, and especially, I know, those gathered here today are responsible for such, so much of the work, the civil legal justice work that's done and so necessary and important. And I know that you have changed and helped so many people in great, great need with civil legal services that have been offered through Bay Area and through the courts. Just an incredible job, and recognizing that this morning. Whereas access to justice is a fundamental and essential right in a democratic society, and whereas many people cannot afford the cost of legal representation and cannot proceed on their own without an attorney, and whereas in Hillsborough County volunteer attorneys donate thousands of hours of legal services each year, and whereas the contributions of volunteer attorneys enable many people to receive legal assistance that they could not otherwise obtain, and whereas the American Bar Association in the Florida Pro Bono Coordinators Association support events that help provide services to low-income individuals and recruit volunteer attorneys to provide free legal services to those in needs, and whereas the Thirteenth Judicial Circuit Pro Bono Committee encourages individuals in the legal community to get involved in pro bono work, and whereas the Thirteenth Judicial Circuit Pro Bono Committee supports Pro Bono Week to teach the public about the extensive work lawyers do to improve the lives of vulnerable members of the community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 20th through October 26th, 2019, as Pro Bono Week in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents to recognize the legal community's contributions to help those most in need. So thank you all so much, and I guess, I'm not sure who's going to accept, Judge Figueroa. And would you like to say a few words about?
Please. Thank you, thank you very much. I'm used to saying, "May it please the court," so I'm going to say, "May it please the court." Mr. Chairman, members of the County Commission, thank you for recognizing us here today for Pro Bono Week. My name is Ron Figueroa, and I have the honor of serving as Chief Judge in the Thirteenth Circuit. Let me take a moment to introduce the great people I've got here behind me. My trial court administrator, Gina Justice, Jenna Hudson.
Perfect name.
Absolutely. Who's the administrator for the Thirteenth Circuit Pro Bono Committee and Pro Bono Manager of Bay Area Legal Services Volunteer Lawyers Program. Anwar Twine Thomas, who's an Assistant Public Defender with Julie Holt's office. He's our Pro Bono Week Coordinator for the Thirteenth Judicial Circuit Pro Bono Committee. And of course, Dick Waltman, our Executive Director of Bay Area Legal Services. And I think we've got everybody, right? Perfect. Thank you. When lawyers are admitted to the Florida Bar, they declare an oath of admission, and in that oath, they swear that they will never reject the cause of the defenseless or oppressed. Our Circuit Pro Bono Committee reminds attorneys that their solemn oath means that they have the duty to ensure that legal services and justice are available to everyone in our community. Here in Hillsborough County, we take that responsibility very seriously. Our Pro Bono Week provides us with the opportunity to expand pro bono services and to celebrate the accomplishments of the hundreds of lawyers who have worked tirelessly to ensure access to justice for our citizens. I'm proud to say that our local judiciary has been involved and supportive of this Pro Bono Committee's efforts since its creation over 20 years ago. Thank you all again for taking the time to recognize the pro bono attorneys in our community and for your support of pro bono service and for your support of the judicial branch in our local judiciary. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for all your work and all the attorneys out there who do such incredible, incredible volunteer services that are so important. We'll step back and take a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Judge, good to see you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good to see you. We're going to change the agenda around a little bit. Commissioner White will present the next proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, as fall and winter approaches, we have weather that's just a bit more pleasant than our friends up north, and that's really when our agricultural season kicks into full gear, and it's really the beginning of fair and festival season. And every year, we kick that off with our very own Hillsborough County Fair, which brings the community together in fellowship and particularly supports our agricultural heritage, which is incredibly important for this county, and it's proven itself to be very important in the economic fabric for our county. So at this time, I would like to invite some special guests to the podium as I read a proclamation into the record, kicking off a couple sets of Hillsborough County Fair Days. So first, I would like to invite Kenley Connell, who is the Fair's Junior Queen. She has her grandparents with her. I'd like to invite them to the podium. That's Judy Connell, her grandmother, and Jody Connell, her grandfather. Next, I'd like to invite Amanda Clark, the Senior Queen, Erica Clark, who's the mother of the Queen, Kelly Messick, the Queen Committee Chair, Tom Umaker, if he's here, the Fair Manager, and Beth Bravus, the Fair President. Good morning. And I just have to tell you that I have a daughter that got into this pageant stuff a couple years ago and is still doing it, and I tell you, I have learned that, you know, this is much, much more than a beauty pageant. These are certainly lovely young ladies, but you really have to have a complete package, academically, intellectually, everything across the board, and I just really appreciate everything that you do as ambassadors for the Hillsborough County Fair. So at this point, I would like to read this proclamation into the record, and Tom's not here. So we'll have Beth come to the podium after I read the proclamation for some comments. So it reads, "Whereas, fairs are an American tradition that bring neighbors together and strengthen the social fabric of communities; and whereas Hillsborough County has a rich history of excellence in agriculture, education, and industry; and whereas the Hillsborough County Fair showcases this heritage while providing entertainment, education, and competition in a fun, family-friendly setting; and whereas the fair includes traditional events such as livestock shows, cooking contests, arts and crafts, and the Harvest Queen Pageant that highlight the skills and talents of people in the community; and whereas a midway featuring exciting rides and a diverse assortment of vendors is the fair's centerpiece and will engage attendees of all ages; and whereas the continued growth and success of the fair, which draws thousands of people over parts of two weeks, is a testament to the quality of its programming; and whereas the Hillsborough County Fair is an opportunity for friends and neighbors to gather in fellowship and celebrate the many ways their positive contributions have strengthened the community; and whereas the fair's 2019 theme, "Let the Good Times Grow," celebrates Hillsborough County's deep rural and agrarian roots. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 17th through October 20th and October 24th through October 27th, 2019, as Hillsborough County Fair Days in Hillsborough County, and urges all residents to attend the event and celebrate the county's rich heritage. It's dated today, the 16th of October, signed by all the Commissioners. Congratulations. I hope you have a wonderful fair season, and Beth, I'd love to have you say a few words.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Commissioner White. On behalf of the board and our staff and our volunteers and our lovely queens, we just want to say thank you so much for this honor. We greatly appreciate it. We're excited to be here. We're excited to kick off the fair tomorrow. I'll take an opportunity for another shameless plug, even though he just gave you the dates the fair does open tomorrow, runs through Sunday, and then again, next Thursday through the following Sunday, we've got a rodeo and a truck and tractor pull and all sorts of agriculture. We would love to have you join us. So thank you again for this honor. We appreciate it.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 My pleasure.
I know you will.
You got everyone.
The next proclamation and end commendation was presented by Commissioner Merman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm very excited to present these two recognitions today. The first one, I have a special place in my heart for this group because we started the Manufacturing Alliance, and today, we're going to honor a very important part of our engine of our economy, and that is manufacturing. It is growing leaps and bounds here in Hillsborough County, bringing many jobs to many people. As you know, the board's been a champion for local manufacturers, and we created the Manufacturing Alliance of Hillsborough County to develop a platform to create the skilled workforce pipeline that our manufacturers need and generate excitement around careers in manufacturing, and they are good, paying jobs. You know, it's, I remember when we first got started, just getting the message out to parents. You probably remember this. It was hard because a lot of people didn't want their kids going into manufacturing, but when they learned that these are, you know, they start at maybe $45,000 a year, and they can move rapidly into $70,000, $80,000 a year, it became clear to them that this could be a very viable career for their child, especially for some children that really don't want to go on to four-year college or community college. So today, I'd like to welcome all the representatives of the manufacturing industry and training partners that we have here today, and that's Peter Sirek from SEAL Dynamics, the Bay Area Manufacturers Association, Beth Salick, Executive Director, Christina Davenport, Megan Myers, Susan Bressard, they are board members, Jerry Kuston, he's the Florida Suncoast Manufacturing Association. Y'all can come up. Mike Ramsey, Lauren Walden, Jerome Monnet from the Hillsborough School District, Dr. Alex Anzalone, Dr. Ginger Clark, Ashley Carl from Hillsborough Community College, Elizabeth Duran, Florida Advanced Technological Education Center, Mark Fried, Elizabeth Vock, Vock, Vokie, Think Creative, Joxa Petrovic. The names are really challenging today. Hillsborough County Economic Development Department. Thank you for creating jobs and thank you for investing in our economy. I really do appreciate all your efforts, and of course, we have Lindsay Kimball here, who is the staff person and who's really worked hard with all these people, and they've definitely, they've dedicated so much time to the Manufacturing Alliance. And yeah, as you know, it takes a while to get it started, but we're really taking off now. So I'd like to, at this time, read the proclamation. Megan Myers, Megan, come on forward. I'm going to present this to you to receive it and say a few words. And it does say, "Whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of the economy in the United States and Florida, recognizing October as Florida Manufacturing Month and October 4th, 2019, as Florida Manufacturing Day highlights the importance of manufacturing and draws attention to many rewarding, high-skill manufacturing jobs, whereas these occasions show support for and celebrate Florida's manufacturers and school programs that prepare the future workforce. The following organizations strongly support manufacturing and manufacturing careers: the Association for Operations Management, Bay Area Manufacturers Association, Florida Suncoast Manufacturers Association, Florida Advanced Technological Education Center of Excellence, it's called FLATE, Florida Defense Contractors Association, Hillsborough Community College, Hillsborough County Public Schools Career and Technical Education, National Tooling and Machining Association, Society of Manufacturing Engineers, University of South Florida College of Engineering, and the Manufacturing Alliance of Hillsborough County. And whereas Manufacturing Day student tours are conducted to strengthen the technical and academic skills of young adults enrolled in manufacturing, engineering, and design courses of study, whereas manufacturing provides jobs for approximately 50,000 Hillsborough County residents, and manufacturing facilities in the county make products as diverse as components used in the home building, aircraft, aerospace, defense, and medical industries. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 4th, 2019, of course, today is October 16th, as Florida Manufacturing Day in Hillsborough County, and October 2019 as Florida Manufacturing Month, and urges all residents to recognize the value of manufacturers, their important role in the county, the state, and the national economy." And I'm so proud to present this to you. Y'all have worked very hard, and please say a few words.
First of all, thank you for having us all here today. We're excited to be here. Manufacturing Month is an annual national event that's executed locally with thousands of manufacturers across the nation. They host students, teachers, parents, job seekers, and local community members to open houses, plant tours, and presentations designed to showcase advanced manufacturing technology as well as high-wage career opportunities. Manufacturing Month, month events in our region included a tour of the Port of Tampa, the Made in Tampa Bay Expo and Career Fair, student tour of the Tampa International Airport, as well as 33 independent student tours. We were able to have 1,100 students realize what our facilities are doing and also the manufacturing careers available. The Bay Area Manufacturing Association provides a forum to exchange ideas and share best practices. It provides networking availability for colleagues and learning opportunities through educational programs and tours. We support STEM opportunities and offer scholarships to students pursuing manufacturing. As you mentioned earlier, manufacturing in the Bay Area offers approximately 60,000 jobs in over 2,500 facilities and growing, and that's in Pinellas, Hillsborough, and Pasco Counties. So we appreciate you recognizing us, and thank you on behalf of all of the industry partners and colleges. Thank you.
Okay, let's take a picture. Who's got the, okay. Y'all hold it. No, you hold it.
If I could ask you to maybe swap sides so we can just go a little tighter.
Thank you.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you can see, manufacturers are very proud of the work they do. Thank you all. And next, this is a really fun one. This is on October 12th, this last Saturday night, the Tampa Hispanic Heritage held their 32nd Annual Gala at the Hilton Downtown. During the evening, Betty Villamontes and Simon Canassi were honored as their Hispanic Woman and Man of the Year. And I'd like to ask, Betty is not here, but Eileen Rodriguez, she is President of Tampa Hispanic Heritage Incorporated, so she's going to accept it for Betty, and I'm sorry Betty couldn't be here because she's, she's really a fantastic woman also. So we're going to celebrate his, we're still celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month here in Hillsborough County, and we are joined by, of course, Mr. Simon Canassi and Eileen Rodriguez. So, and also President Digna Alvarez, and everybody knows Digna, and she was the gala co-chair, and I heard it was very successful, so congratulations. So I'd like to present the commendations to you, and it's special for Simon because his mom was the 2008 Woman of the Year for the Tampa Hispanic Heritage Incorporated. So, and Simon, you've served on many committees here at the county, so we appreciate your contributions. This says, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is proud to honor Simon Canassi for his many accomplishments during his illustrious career in the business community. Work that has earned him recognition as Tampa Hispanic Heritage Inc.'s 2019 Hispanic Man of the Year. A native of Cuba, Mr. Canassi immigrated to Tampa with his family in 1961 to pursue the American dream of achieving personal success and serving others. After graduating from the University of South Florida, his career flourished as a wealth management advisor with Merrill Lynch for 30 years and senior vice president with Morgan Stanley for 10 years. His work earned him numerous accolades, including the Merrill Lynch Lifetime Achievement Award. In addition, Mr. Canassi dedicates himself to others through his involvement with numerous organizations, such as the Friends of Tampa Firefighters, in addition to sponsoring scholarships at Hillsborough Community College, USF, University of Tampa. For his efforts, Tampa Hispanic Heritage honored him as its 2019 Hispanic Man of the Year, and the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners does hereby commend Simon Canassi for his service to the Hispanic community and congratulates him for his latest distinction." We're so proud. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You know, I was very fortunate to have fulfilled the American dream and felt it an obligation to pay it forward, and I have spent most of my adult life doing just that.
I truly believe that the path that brought me here is not nearly as important as the path that I can build for others to fulfill that same dream. So I encourage everyone to always remember, you don't do it alone. There's always a lot of help, a lot of support from people that you know and that you don't know, and it's really an obligation later to pay it forward and to build a path, not walls, but a path. And I thank you very much. I want to, I want to also, I would be remiss if I did not say that my dear friend back here, Les Miller, and I have known each other since college, and I know that he's going to be retiring soon, and he's going to probably hitch a ride on my RV with me.
That's right.
To go see the sights, and I welcome that. But Les, you have been nothing but a stellar statesman to our community. We are better because of you, and I am eternally grateful for everything you have done to make this community a great place to live. You have been nothing short of just a class act, and I'm proud to call you my friend, and I wish you well in retirement. It's great. I tell everyone that the only decisions I have to make in the morning is whether or not I'm going to shave and what color shorts I'm going to wear. So enjoy it, my friend.
Simon.
That was great. Thank you.
I was going to say something anyway, now you got me choked up. I first met Simon in 1975 after I was discharged from the Air Force and came back to the University of South Florida, and he and I participated on a lot of things specifically on the industry of sports. This guy's quite an athlete, but Simon has given himself so much, he's given so much to this community. I can't even describe all the things that you've done to make this community a better place, and you're right, when you came back from, when you came from Cuba, you always said that you owe this country something for that, and you've gone above and beyond service to Hillsborough County and this country. So I want to thank you so very much for what you've done. Simon and I had a great trip one year to Sicily together, my wife and I and his family. We had some enormous fun, but he's now retired and deciding if he wants to shave or what shorts he's going to wear. So enjoy it, my friend. Simon.
That was great. Thank you.
I was going to say something anyway, now you got me choked up. I first met Simon in 1975 after I was discharged from the Air Force and came back to the University of South Florida, and he and I participated on a lot of things specifically on the industry of sports. This guy's quite an athlete, but Simon has given himself so much, he's given so much to this community. I can't even describe all the things that you've done to make this community a better place, and you're right, when you came back from, when you came from Cuba, you always said that you owe this country something for that, and you've gone above and beyond service to Hillsborough County and this country. So I want to thank you so very much for what you've done. Simon and I had a great trip one year to Sicily together, my wife and I and his family. We had some enormous fun, but he's now retired and deciding if he wants to shave or what shorts he's going to wear. shorts he's going to put on, and I'm going to join you in about thirteen months. So Simon, thank you for what your comments, and thank you for what you've done. I appreciate it very much, my brother. Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
I want to say, for those of you that did not have the absolutely fabulous opportunity of attending the gala, it was so much fun. The performances, but what I recognize is the leadership in the room, the royalty that has led this community so well and participated and guided us so well in honoring and celebrating what our Hispanic community has brought to our community was such a joy to watch and to see and to be fun and be part of. Don't miss it next year. It is a blast. It was absolutely a blast. And the young performers, I'm telling you, that blew me away. That was a perfect segue into the celebration of all you've brought to the community. So thank you so much for allowing me to share and be there and witness the amazing leadership that filled that room. It was terrific. Thank you.
Okay, let's take a picture.
Let me present the other.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then we'll do it together, or do you want to do it separate? Okay. The other commendation is for Betty Villamontes, and I'm really sorry she couldn't be here today, because she's a wonderful woman, and if you all haven't met her yet, I encourage you to meet her. So much like Simon, so encouraging for other Hispanics in the community to get involved. And that's what, Simon and I have known each other for years, and I've noticed that about him and Betty. I think the two nominees this year and the award winners were outstanding. This one says, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Betty Villamontes for her service as a certified public accountant, author, and work that has led her to be named two thousand nineteen Hispanic Woman of the Year by Tampa Hispanic Heritage, Inc. After immigrating from Cuba with her family in nineteen eighty, Ms. Villamontes strove to accomplish her lifelong goals in Hillsborough County. After earning a bachelor's and two master's degrees from the University of South Florida, she worked for over twenty-two years at Tampa General Hospital in numerous capacities to help improve healthcare in the community. In addition to being appointed to the Hillsborough Community College Board Trustees acting as its first female Hispanic chairperson, Ms. Villamontes served as the chief financial officer for the Lion's Eye Institute for Transplant and Research, a nonprofit organization that helps improve the quality of life for the visually impaired. As an author, one of her novels, Waiting on Zepoti Street, was selected for reading by United Nations Book Club and became an Amazon bestseller. I encourage you all to read it. All these efforts led Ms. Villamontes to be named two thousand nineteen Hispanic Woman of the Year. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Betty Villamontes for her latest achievement and appreciates her dedication and service to the Hispanic community in the Tampa Bay area." I'll present this to Eileen, and would you like to say a few words about Betty before we take our pictures?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Merman. Thank you, Chairman Miller. Thank you, Commissioner Oberman, and the entire Board of County Commissioners. We really appreciate your support of Tampa Hispanic Heritage. Tampa Hispanic Heritage, this year, we're excited to celebrate our fortieth anniversary. We were established in nineteen seventy-nine, and our mission is to promote, preserve, and celebrate Hispanic heritage here in Tampa Bay, and we also raise higher education scholarships for Hispanic students to go to universities and colleges here in Tampa. We're so proud of Simon and Betty. This is a Lifetime Achievement Award. It's a really big deal, and we couldn't think of any two more deserving individuals than Simon and Betty. Thank you for recognizing our Hispanic heritage. We have a tremendous amount of wonderful, committed, dedicated leaders and members in the community that serve all of our community members, and we're just proud to be part of that. So thank you again for the recognition, and I want to thank Digna Alvarez, our gala co-chair, for all her hard work. She worked countless hours, so thank you to Digna. Thank you again.
Okay, let's take our pictures.
Mr. Merman, change it to the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Good to see you.
Yes, Commissioners, we have two deferrals. Item A1, which was to increase standard purchase order with Fitch and Associates for continued staff augmentation risk mitigation services until a nine-one-one manager is hired, that's being deferred to November sixth. B10 is also being deferred to November sixth. That was to award a three-year contract to Tishler Bice for professional consulting services related to the identification, analysis, modeling, and mapping of cost and revenue impacts associated with land use in urban form. That's being deferred because representatives of the company were not able to be here today to answer questions. We have one revision, which is G2, that's just to change the time certain to eleven forty-five from ten fifteen. We have one item removed from consent for discussion by Commissioner Kemp, that's A55-F, Board Appointments to the Land Use Appeals Board. We have five public hearings. D1 is a public hearing to consider an ordinance providing for two-hundred-and-seventy-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for rezoning and planned development zoning modifications within the RP2 area. D2 is a public hearing to consider enactment of an ordinance regulating the sale, use, and possession of vaping devices and vaping products by persons under twenty-one years of age. Commissioners, we would like to open, take comment, and continue that item at the request of Sheriff Cronister so that he can work, have further discussions with the mayor of Tampa. D3 is the second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportion share agreement with the school board and Ridgewood LLC. D4 is another public hearing for school concurrency, second public hearing proportion share agreement between the school board and Bel Air Capital Group LLC. And D5 is the first of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportion share agreement between the school board and Starlight Homes Florida LLC. Ten-thirty, we have item E1, this is a presentation of the IP Uptown District. Eleven AM, two items. E2 is a special appearance by Martine Collier, Executive Director of the Arts Council, to present their semi-annual activity report. And B3 is the agreement between the county and the Arts Council for their annual budget contribution of nine-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. Eleven fifteen, F2 is Commissioner Hagan's item to direct me to coordinate with Pasco County officials to construct the Canaan Street and Mansfield Boulevard Road connection. Eleven-thirty is F3, Commissioner Miller's item, and that, excuse me, that item is to direct staff to bring back to November sixth regular board meeting recommendations, recommended approaches such as contracted providers of professional foster care that will better prepare and reengineer the Lake Mag campus to be more conducive to the new federal placement requirements and produce more permanent placement solutions for at-risk children. Final time certain, eleven forty-five. G2 is a global report from the Budget Department regarding service scorecards for conservation and environmental land management, extension services, and water resources departments. Those are the changes to the agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White, and Kemp. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions, I think for the, maybe the county attorney about the deferral of item B10. I'm thinking this does not go back under the cone of silence at this point for a deferral, and just a couple of questions. Does this deferral provide us an opportunity to possibly ask for something else to be included in the scope of services, or to ask for review of something specific that maybe was not reviewed, or anything like that?
Yes, Commissioner, the cone of silence would be in place until the award is made, so that will stay in place. But if you, now that the item has been published and you've seen all the backup, if you have some particular questions, I think you could share them with the administrator for consideration.
All right. So any other questions would go through the administrator to that?
Yes, because it's a procurement process, so it would be appropriate to direct those questions.
Thank you very much.
Look, the scope can't be changed at this point.
Yeah, the scope has been approved by the board back in May, but without knowing exactly what your concerns might be.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp, and Commissioner White to approve the changes to the agenda, seeing to further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Now moving to public comment. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issue. This provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. The board has set aside a forty-five-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the chair, the board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Persons wishing to speak before the board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for comment form located at the sign-up table inside the boardroom. Citizens speaking on the scheduled agenda items will be heard first before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly to the microphone. Three minutes are allotted for each speaker, and someone move that timer from behind the computer there and put it on the edge of the desk so they can see it, please. When the yellow light comes on, it means you have thirty seconds, and when the red light comes on, I mean your three minutes are up. Our first speaker is David Wilson.
Good morning, board members. My name is David Wilson. I reside in Riverview. I'm here today to speak to you about A55-F, Land Use Appeals Board. Yeah, I applied just to use my experiences and my education, but also just to serve in leadership at heart. So I was a former NPO, Citizen of the Committee Chairman. I personally think my greatest accomplishment was, you know, obviously researching every issue, being involved and attending, because obviously attendance is always, you know, a tough thing when you have private individuals leading their life, working, being involved. But most importantly, when people came to the committee, when people were giving their thoughts, I treated them with respect. And I believe that is my biggest accomplishment, and I hope to use that to the Land Use Appeals Board. So my background, I'm a builder slash developer, if you call it, just a land acquisition individual for a major home builder, Mary Judge Homes specifically, where we've developed and built hundreds of homes around Hillsborough County, most noticeably on Providence and Bloomingdale, about sixty-four lots over there, but involved throughout the Tampa Bay region as a whole. So with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity. I'll continue to give resumes or additional information about myself to your offices, and I hope to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Goldstein, followed by Sean Wilson.
Good morning. My name is Rick Goldstein. I'm the Vice President for Government Affairs for the West Chase Community Association. I've contacted your offices, phones, email, and so forth, and a couple of things. One, is interested in the vacancy on the planning program for the unincorporated Hillsborough County. At West Chase, we have a regional transportation action plan. We're working with, as a beta site for T Barter. We have a lot of innovative actions that we'd like to be able to partner with the county, and I've also contacted your offices to set up individual appointments. You have all of my qualifications, and I'm just here just to introduce myself and let you know my interest to wanting to continue to work with the county. We at West Chase really want to thank the Office of Neighborhood Relations for their help, especially Wanda and Stephanie. They've made my job at West Chase very easy in working with all of the county, and want to thank Mike also for all of his help for all of the programs that you've helped us with. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Wilson, followed by David McAllister.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board. Sean Wilson with Blue Sky Communities, five-three-hundred West Cypress. I want to express my appreciation. We were very honored to have three county commissioners present at a groundbreaking ceremony last week. That was a joint venture with Metropolitan Ministries in the Sefner area. Thank you again for coming, and we really appreciate it. A couple of years ago, I started looking for sites in the Uptown area, and you're going to hear a big presentation about that in a little while from the Uptown folks. We started looking for sites with Sarah Combs at UACDC, and we finally found one. We found an amazing site. It fronts right on Fletcher Avenue, and you all bought into our vision for that site because you approved a rezoning application and an affordable housing density bonus earlier this year. So we have a hundred and eighteen units approved there. UACDC is going to, will occupy a first-floor space right on Fletcher where they're going to operate their INVEST program, which is a workforce development program. UACDC is going to provide a lot of amazing services. There has been no new affordable housing in the university area for families in more than ten years. Yes, there's a lot of cheap housing, but there's no new affordable housing in that area. I'm concerned that the county is missing a huge opportunity because yesterday, our project lost a funding round. The HFA voted three to two in favor of a project in Brandon, and Brandon is a great area, it's true. There's a lot of affordable housing in Brandon. Blue Sky just completed about a year and a half ago an affordable housing community in Brandon, and the one that y'all went to is in that general direction. In the university area, there's nothing. Our project is a true joint venture. UACDC is a twenty-five percent owner. They're going to be able to use their profits and their fees to reinvest in the community, and I am imploring the board to reconsider whether the right decision was made yesterday at the HFA meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. David McAllister, followed by Travis Horn.
Good morning, Commissioners. David McAllister. As you know, I come here to advocate for an appreciation for local history and veterans, especially of the period of the War Between the States. Speaking of history, I noticed in our agenda here on item two-zero-one-three-five on the list of things for future consideration that there's a historical project, and of course, I'm for that historical project if it's done right. My comment is that the Tampa Bay History Center was referred to as "the custodians of the county's valuable history." Well, just to point out that they're not the only custodians of valuable history. I think the Plant Museum, the Tampa Historical Society, the Hillsborough County Veterans Park and Museum Committee, and even the Sons of Confederate Veterans who care for Confederate Memorial Park would all consider themselves custodians of valuable history as well. And I really want to recall Commissioner Victor Crist's program for historical restoration, which shows that there's more than one custodian of our history. As to today's proclamations, with the Heritage Month, let's not forget that along with Hispanic Heritage, this is also Polish and Filipino and Italian Heritage Month as well. We just had Columbus Day this week, and I hate to report that there have been a number of monuments and statues of Christopher Columbus which have been vandalized across the country, showing an increasing disregard for appreciation for history and heritage. Sorry to see that. On the pro bono group, I clerked for Bay Area Legal Services when I was a law student at Stetson, and I do pro bono work now because there's mandatory reporting to the Florida bar. Sometimes it's voluntary pro bono, sometimes it's involuntary pro bono, but it does happen. It's a good thing. Speaking of legal activity, I've been down in Lee County, Florida, where there's a high-profile criminal case which has an issue involving Marcy's Law. Who's familiar with Marcy's Law? It's now part of the Florida Constitution, having been voted in last November with all those other constitutional amendments. Marcy's Law started out in California, there are about eight or ten states now that have it, grants victims of criminal cases certain rights. In the Fort Myers case, the court is actually recognizing the Sons of Confederate Veterans as a victim when a bust of General Robert E. Lee was vandalized. If this constitutional amendment had been in place when the Hillsborough- which have been vandalized across the country, showing an increasing disregard for appreciation for history and heritage. Sorry to see that. On the pro bono group, I clerked for Bay Area Legal Services when I was a law student at Stetson, and I do pro bono work now because there's, you know, mandatory reporting to the Florida bar. Sometimes it's voluntary pro bono, sometimes it's involuntary pro bono, but it does happen. It's a good thing. Speaking of legal activity, I've been down in Lee County, Florida, where there's a high-profile criminal case which has an issue involving Marcy's Law. Who's familiar with Marcy's Law? It's now part of the Florida Constitution, having been voted in last November with all those other constitutional amendments. Marcy's Law started out in California, and there are about eight or ten states now that have it, grants victims of criminal cases certain rights. In the Fort Myers case, the court is actually recognizing the Sons of Confederate veterans as a victim when a bust of General Robert E. Lee was vandalized. If this constitutional amendment had been in place when the Hillsborough County Confederate Memorial Park monument was vandalized by Antifa, things might have been a little different here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Travis Horn, followed by Janet Hillborn.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Travis Horn, representing Hillsborough County Firefighters, Local Two Two Nine Four. My remarks will be brief this morning. I just wanted to continue this conversation that we started before, and also thank you all for your budget allocations for the fire service. I didn't get an opportunity to do that after the last budget hearings. So I wanted to reiterate our thanks, our gratitude for the men and women in the trenches every day, for our families who need that fire service, and for concern that if your families, our families, need acute medical care, that it will be there in a timely fashion with the volume that we're seeing. So I want to, again, thank you all, but I want to continue that conversation. I'm certainly willing to meet with all of you individually and would like to do that, and I'll reach out to your offices to schedule meetings, but I appreciate it. And I know the men and women in the trenches appreciate it, so I wanted to come and express that gratitude and thanks, and look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Janet Hillborn. Followed by James Franklin.
Good morning. I'm Janet Hillborn. I have a handout too for you. But I'm here today regarding Sixth Street and Wy Moma. I received a letter from the Board of Commissioners that the street name would be changed. There was no notification or input to the residents before it was voted on by the board. It was to be named for a man that never lived on the street. I have lived on Sixth Street for fifty years. My children were raised here, and my husband died here. It would be a hardship for me to have to change my address, my license, passport, registration, deed, and many other things. I truly resent the fact that this name change, excuse me, came about without any input or knowledge from the residents on the street. It has been Sixth Street for over a hundred years. I hope it will remain so. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. Why not change the name of the street where Mr. Scarborough lived and go through normal channels to do it? I'm submitting a petition showing you a number of people against the name change and the way it was done. It's wonderful to honor someone, but not in a way it will harm others. Please rescind your vote and think of the others who were affected by the change. Thank you.
Give that to the recorder. Ma'am? Thank you.
This is the petition to change the name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Franklin? James Franklin? Okay. Buddy Harwell?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's James Franklin. My wife and I live in beautiful downtown Baum. I'm going to complain, and the complaining I'm going to do is last year, when all the property was bought up around me, we came down and we spoke the first little meeting, but we didn't know what hoops we had to jump through to speak to the commissioners, and the land deal was just pushed right through. And what my complaint is, I didn't know I had to speak up and maybe get a lawyer to get a boundary around me that I should. I thought we were going to get two hundred and fifty foot. I don't believe I got anything. That's my complaint, and is what it is with the property built right next to me. Maybe a couple of foot higher, when it rains, all the water's going to come down on our property. That's my complaint. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Buddy Harwell, followed by Melissa Busby.
Good morning, Buddy Harwell, representing Baum and Gibsonton. I'm here mainly to talk about the rezoning process, mainly between the opponents and the oppositions. It seems to be a two-sided page. Seems like when the opposition gets up and speaks, we always want to know the relationship to where they live. It's never brought up when the opponent comes up. And we know these are developers, attorneys, real estate develop, real estate agents, might even be the ex-wife of the farmer selling the land, hoping for a payout. So I just, you know, want to make that clear, see what we can do about that. Just remember, activists have no borders. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Melissa Busby.
Good morning. I'm Melissa Busby. I'm here regarding the street name change of Sixth Street and Wy Moma. A street name change to the board may seem insignificant to you, but this is more than just a street name. This is an entire town that has been neglected by our county and continues to be neglected by poor decision-making. I'm asking you reconsider changing Sixth Street to Scarborough Street. This changes impacts to the residents that were not thought through before jumping headfirst into good intentions. Good intentions, sorry. Good intentions are wonderful until they carry real repercussions. There are residents that have resided on this street for thirty years or more. My grandfather lived on this street. He was a pillar in this community, a veteran, a volunteer firefighter, and a small business owner, often giving more than he got in return. No one used their position to erect any monuments to him, a man that is deeply missed by many members in his small town. A rash decision, your rash decision-making has real emotional effects on my family that is still grieving from our loss. This is more than a name. It was an abuse of power made from good intentions and quick decisions made at a small-town meeting. Not a single resident that will be affected was asked if they approved. This change carries financial burdens as well as the annoyance of changing all of their personal documents registrations. Imagine moving without actually moving. Driver's license, registration, voter registration, utilities, and so on all have to be updated at the cost of these residents. The greed of this board has become overabundant and out of control. Wy Moma is often referred to as the armpit of the county and is treated as such. This board is continually making poor decisions that affect real people. Please consider another street to honor Mr. Scarborough. You're broadly approving enough new developments. There are plenty of streets to honor this man. Please do not change Sixth Street. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker for public comment, changes to the agenda, I mean, approve the consent agenda. Second by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White to approve the consent agenda. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Murrow.
I have a couple of minutes before public hearing time. It will take B1, which is County Attorney's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Helen Ferris with the County Attorney's Office. This item is to adopt a resolution approving a plan of finance by the Hillsborough County Housing Finance Authority for single-family mortgage revenue bonds. There's no county money involved. It's not certain that we would actually issue the bonds because the market rate right now is so low, it may not be feasible, but we do this so that we can keep the allotment. I have Randy Clement here with BMO if there's any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Murman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, Kemp, and Hagan. Seeing further, Commissioner Obermann, you recognize.
As an abundance of caution, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
As what?
An abundance of caution, to avoid any conflicts of interest, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
And you've completed the form?
Yes.
Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero. Commissioner Obermann abstains.
Mr. Murrow.
All right, well, we're just about at ten, so why don't we go ahead and begin public hearings? First one, D1.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. This item is the first of two public hearings to consider an ordinance providing for a two-hundred-and-seventy-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of new applications for rezonings and planned development zoning modifications within the residential plan to future land use category that would increase the number of allowable residential units or non-residential square footage and/or reduce required buffers unless the reduction is provided for connectivity to adjacent property or rights-of-way. The second public hearing on this ordinance will be held at your November sixth, 2019 regular meeting. This is a notice public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. I have four people that signed up to speak to this item, D1. The first is James Franklin. James Franklin, you wish to speak on D1? Followed by Buddy Harwell.
Good morning again, James Franklin, beautiful downtown Baum. I'm complaining again. I'm complaining when they build all those houses around me. They're going to cluster them. They're going to put them on forty-foot lots. We need to put an end to this forty-foot lots. Every lot should be at least a hundred foot wide. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Buddy Harwell, followed by Glenn Soper.
Buddy Harwell, Baum. Take the RP2 plan, take all the components of it. The only thing that fits into Baum is the rural area, the open spaces. Clustering forty-foot lots don't fit into it. Four thousand square foot lots. We have barns bigger than they're putting these houses on. We don't have berms with fences on top that's right alongside the roadway that floods the roadway because we don't have ditches and culverts to allow the water to run off. We don't have the retention ponds that's sitting above, five foot above everyone else that's flooding out everyone like we've been seeing in the other developments. So I just, we're talking with the planning commission. We're going to be real active. I just hope you understand where we're coming from. We're out there for a reason. Nighttime, we're out there, you can see fish hawk, big glow. You can see down there in Ruskin, the big glow. We don't want to be a big glow. We want the Dark Skies Initiative that's not being paid attention to. We want the roads improved mainly, is another big part of it. That isn't being improved. Where's the safety and welfare of your citizens you're supposed to stand up for first? You keep building these developments, not doing the roads, you're putting our lives at risk. That should be first. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Soper. Followed by Bill O'Brien.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. My name is Glenn Soper. I own a piece of property across from Hawkstone in Riverview. It's a large parcel which we went under contract in July to sell that parcel to a very large builder. Under this moratorium, I'm out thousands and thousands of dollars because of the surveys and the things that we've put into place to get this done. And I would hope that with you all, that you would consider people that have contracts that have spent the money to get the zoning done and get approvals with the builder, but not permitted yet, which we were going to permitting, but now because of this moratorium, they want to put it off for almost a year. I'm a private citizen. It's my private land. It's a lot of land. And I want out from under the land, obviously with the building going on. So I would hope that you would consider people that are in contract with a builder as of right now and the money that I've had to put out. Thank you.
Mr. Clark.
Yes, Commissioners, the ordinance contemplates that parties that are already in the process, they've submitted applications, their applications are being processed. Those applications would not be affected by the moratorium. It's a moratorium on processing, receiving and processing new applications as of the date that the direction was given. So I don't know where the, what stage that the gentleman is with his project, so it would depend on that, but I can certainly talk to him. Again, likewise, this is just the first of two hearings, so we're not voting on anything today, but certainly be happy to look at it.
Get with him and talk to him, okay? Thank you. Bill O'Brien. Followed by Alan Dowd.
Good morning. My name's Bill O'Brien. I live in Baum. I've lived there all my life. First, I'd like to say thank you to this commission for taking the opportunity to open up this RP2 review. We all believe, at least those of us in South Hillsborough County, that it's the right thing to do, and we're totally in favor of this process. What we'd like to see is to work diligently to restore the original intent of what we believe RP2 designation was intended to be or intended to be utilized for. The intent was to preserve the agricultural lands outside of the urban service area and to help control the urban sprawl outside that same urban service area. The current guidelines allow gross misuse of the rules by developers and the subsequent approval by this commission because of the rules. The citizens of Baum and South Hillsborough County support a comprehensive review of the current RP2 classification with a minimum focus on improving rules and guidelines to help maintain the rural character of South Hillsborough County. In particular, clarify and improve the RP2 content or intent. Maintain standards for minimum lot sizes. And I agree with Mr. Buddy Harwell in regard to the forty-foot lots. They don't fit. They're not compatible with our community, with South Hillsborough County. Maintain the intended setbacks on the developments that are approved. Do not include, we request that the designation does not allow the developer to include undevelopable land in determination of final and ultimate lot size. For instance, I have two hundred acres, a hundred and twenty acres of swamp. I can put, with RP2, I could put four hundred houses on that two hundred acres. A hundred and twenty acres is undevelopable, so eighty acres I could put four hundred houses on. And my lot sizes are forty foot wide. It's wrong. It's not compatible with South Hillsborough County. And we require, we'd like to remove, which I just spoke to you, but we'd like to remove the clustering from the ability to cluster, you know, in the RP2. We would also strongly recommend that this designation requires that infrastructure be in place before development can be approved. There must be a comprehensive review that determines the infrastructures there.
Thank you.
We commit to work with the county
Thank you, sir.
to make the changes necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Dowd. Am I pronouncing that right? Alan, it's a D-A-U-D. See here? Anybody familiar with that name here? That's the la, does anyone else wish to address item D1? Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners. Alan Daywood.
Oh, that's what that is.
Three thousand seven Drake Slanting Court. Speaking on behalf of five property owners that I'm currently working with that reside off of Baum Boyett, directly across the street from Hawkstone. If you guys are all familiar with that parcel of land, it's right next to the airfield that is ELAP property along with the BMX track that's there, so it just neighbors it to the north. Utilities are out there. They've been there. Part of the reason why Hawkstone got approved. I understand what the gentleman said earlier in regards to clustering, but that's how the code's been written, you know, so we're staying well within the line of the code. We do want to improve the area. We're not necessarily... Some of these property owners are under contract. Their zoning application has not been processed yet. They're going through the due diligence process. So rather than moving forward with the zoning, they wanted to get all their ducks in the row first to see if it's a viable project. This moratorium puts them at a disadvantage. You know, I understand that we're looking at reviewing the code and trying to make things a little bit better due to traffic, but, you know, there was no really hearing. The moratorium took place as of last, the last meeting. So it really didn't give them a chance to fill anything out and proceed with it. That's all I really have to say. If you guys would take that in consideration, that'd be great. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address item D1? Anyone else wish to address item D1? Commissioner Murman, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank the residents that...
And I wanna thank the residents that came out today to speak on this item. You know, I did bring up some things at our last discussion about this because of Baum and Riverview and how does that work out with the two of them being so close in proximity to each other. I think I just wanna make sure, and for my peace of mind, that the process is clear. And it's clear to them, it's clear to us, about how this is going to move forward during the period of the moratorium. I don't know, Cameron, you can tell us exactly. You know, they're gonna show up at all these meetings and voice these concerns, but I wanna, I think, and also there are both sides to this issue. I just, I think there needs to be a clear process to them and to us about what's gonna happen over the next 270 days till they come back to us with the final report. And I think we owe it to the residents out there.
Okay, yes, commissioner. So, how this is functioning is the board is creating this moratorium. And that's placing owners within those affected areas that they cannot submit new applications or have that new applications processed during this period. Again, it doesn't affect applications that came in prior to. It affects new applications. What this is doing from this direction is creating direction to staff to not accept and receive applications in these categories while this review process is underway. It lasts for 270 days, and then there's built into the ordinance provision to allow for the board to direct an extension if needed at the end. So, the board's creating clear direction for staff to not accept these applications going forward. And as far as outreach or communication with citizens in the area, I mean, that's certainly something that staff in our office can answer questions or help citizens with as needed.
Yeah, and if I can just add to that. Because the board has directed the study of this thing and the planning commission has accepted that work and is actually undertaking that, they will be reaching out to stakeholders, holding public hearings, and there will be, obviously, notice for all of that. This is going to be a study process and the absolute goal is to receive public input. So, there will be many opportunities for that.
Okay, and as a follow-up, because I know Commissioner Kemp, I, several others, have been concerned about the communications. And I just wanna make sure that there is clear communication to the residents. And I'm talking both sides of the issue. There are property owners and there are residents that don't always, don't agree with the process as it's moving forward. But I just wanna make sure that the communication is clear to them. And I don't know who that message would go to. I guess to Ms. Lopez in Communications to make sure everybody gets the correct information.
Now, see, everybody getting the cue. Remember, this is the first of two public hearings. This will come back again.
Right.
What's the date it will come back? November 6th, so be ever mindful of that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Yes, thank you. It's, just to be clear, it's not a moratorium on building. It only is a temporary pause on zoning changes. So, everyone is free to use their property according to their current zoning, according to their property rights, and build what their current zoning allows. Just, is just a temporary pause on zoning changes that would change what people can build on their land and give us a chance to study some of the issues that we've all been facing. And certainly, all the stakeholders will be at the table and have a chance to really make the rules as good as they can be for all sides.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I just, I wanna encourage everyone to recognize the value of actually taking a pause sometimes. We've had several hearings over the last year. Land use is not exactly my, you know, strength, I would suggest. But the frustration that our community is facing is the fact that we have grown as fast as we have without necessarily kinda taking a pause and saying, well, are we doing the right thing for all of our communities? Whether that be, you know, homeowners, developers, residents, the environment, the community as a whole. So, I think this is an opportunity for us to really get it right, given our current environment. Not where we were 20 years ago, but where we are right now. So, I'm looking forward to that communication plan. I really was encouraged when we started reaching out on various other initiatives that have taken changes this year, where we wanted to reach out to the community and share with them where we are, what we're considering, and what is on the table for consideration, whether that be stormwater fees or anything. I think this is an opportunity for us to take a pause and to, because once it's approved, it's on, game on. And we can't kinda back into it. And we felt, in my opinion, our hands have been tied in a lot of cases. And I'd like to see that, be able to open up and be able to serve our community in the best way. So, thank you for putting this forward, and I will support this.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Overman, for your comments due to a pause. And you're absolutely right. This is a decision that we make. That once we make that land use decision, it's irretrievable. Nothing can be done, basically, unless appeals in court, but it's pretty final. And so, we have to be, I think, with much more care and consideration. I very much appreciate your comments, Commissioner Merman, because I do think we need to have a much higher profile on our website. First off, in terms of land use and how citizens can find out. And we could highlight and write, have this written up and all the information about it. I think we have to, we do have to figure out how to, that's one of the things that I think this pause would be good for, is to look at the citizen involvement and the, all the involvement in this process and really highlight it. And I would love to see, I mean, I just think it's one of the most important things that we do, to see a more prominence on our website, more description, and more ways of us interacting and working with citizens, residents, everyone.
Commissioner White, this is an item that you brought forth. You recognize?
Thank you very much. I just wanna echo Commissioner Smith's sentiments that this is not a moratorium on building, but rather new rezoning applications. I've spoken with an industry insider that has said that there is so much going on around this county and even within the planning area with respect to growth that engineers, trades, builders, they aren't even gonna notice this moratorium. I do empathize with those landowners that were very close to entry into the rezoning process, but you have to have a starting point here. And I do think that we need to make meaningful tweaks or, in some cases, significant changes to the RP2 category. I just wanna say, in the interest of full disclosure, although I'm not an expert in law or land use, I don't think we're gonna be able to just completely roll back the RP2 category. But, so I want both sides, you know, landowners, developers, and the citizen activists to realize that if we do this right, both sides are gonna feel like they gave something up. But that's what we're aiming for. And if both sides feel like that in the end, I think we've done good work and that we've done the right thing. And I certainly continue to support this initiative and think this is an opportunity for this board and our staff to do really, really good work on the land use front.
This closes the public hearing on item D1. It will come back on the November 6th agenda. Am I correct? Okay, thank you. Mr. Merrill, you recognize?
Public hearing D2, and just to remind the board and the public that we're going to open, take comment, and continue this public hearing at the request of Sheriff Cronister.
You just wanna say something, sir?
For public comment, sir.
Okay. This, item will be continued, if I'm not mistaken. To what date? November 6th?
Uh, yes.
So, we have 12 people that wanna speak on this. Be ever mindful that it's gonna come back. And our November 6th meeting is gonna be continued. Michael Cherup, Jr.?
Good morning. My name is Michael Cherup. I'm a former smoker and a vapor for the last six years. I'm also an owner of a vape store in South Tampa. I oppose this motion for several reasons. One is it takes rights away from people who are 18 to 20 years old right now and makes something that they're legally doing right now illegal immediately and criminally. They can travel to a concurrent county to obtain the same things that they can get here legally now. And most glaringly that I noticed in this ordinance is it doesn't address cigarettes or tobacco products. So, a person who is now on a legally safer method of getting their nicotine would now be forced or may go back to cigarettes, which is 95% more dangerous according to the Royal College of Physicians in England. A solution is more enforcement of current laws. I checked the FDA site this morning. In the last two years in the city of Tampa, there were 76 compliance violations. One of those was a vape shop. The remaining 75 were two smoke shops, drugstores, convenience stores, and gas stations. If we enforce the current laws that we have, children won't be getting what they don't need to have. Thank you for your time.
Trevor Campbell, followed by Patricia Cosgrove.
Good morning, commissioners and staff. My name's Trevor Campbell. I'm the owner of Vapor Unlimited. I have eight brick and mortar stores and I'm also a manufacturer. I think that we should consider when we do the 21, we're worried about maybe having people get arrested from 18 to 20, and now they've got a criminal record. So, maybe a grandfather date from 19, just as a consideration. Also, the reason why I say that is we have a lot of kids that are seniors in our high schools that are 18 years old. And in the current law, they're able to go to the counter and purchase an e-cigarette device and sell it to their friends. That's really not what we want. So, making it 19, we have very few 19-year-olds, I believe, that we have in high school. I don't have any data on that. I also wanted to also make note, too, is that Moffitt has stated that it is okay to use e-cigarettes as a method to quit smoking. Well, I also wanted to mention that we have 893,000 vapors in the state of Florida. We are a retirement state. These people, after 20, 25 years, can't take it anymore for their lungs, so... And that's contagious with a lot of other people, with their family members as well. So, in closing, I did have a little concern with page three, lines one through 11. I understand that this bill was created under health, safety, and welfare, but it was created on CDC data that stated that the opinion that e-cigs are causing the health issue that's going around here when it's really illegal marijuana vape cartridges. So, one thing that I did wanna address, too, that maybe you wanna consider adding in here is consequences on kids when they get caught with this. That mom and dad, forced parenting, have to take their child to maybe a drug testing place, non-innovative swab their mouth to make sure that they do not have nicotine. And after that 30 days, they can make a reasonable decision to A, quit vaping, or B, lose your driving privileges, perhaps, and then you can add on there. And here's a hook. They'll drop it like a bad habit. I think that's all that I have. If you can consider it, that'd be great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Patricia Cosgrove. She'll be followed by Sean Allen.
Hello, my name is Patricia Cosgrove, and I'm a resident of Hillsborough County. I live in Brandon, and I own a vape shop called Brandon Vape. And I talk to a lot of people who do vape, and they feel that it helps them to quit smoking. And we all know that young children are getting a hold of cigarettes. It's out there. It's happening. And I feel that we do need to raise the limit. However, a person who has already started vaping should not be forced to go back to cigarettes if they still feel that they are hooked on nicotine. And I feel that maybe we should put an ordinance in there to grandfather these people in, because if they're already doing it and then you take their rights away and tell them that it's illegal and that they're breaking the law by even possessing something that they've already had, it just doesn't seem that that is a fair thing to do. So, as a vape shop owner, I feel it's our responsibility to card people when they come into our store. And we do need to raise the age because of the 18-year-olds that are still in school that do have access to their friends. I see it happening. I see people coming in my store wanting to start vaping that have never smoked before. And we try to discourage the nicotine use, but it is happening. And I don't feel it's right to punish these people who have already had the right to do it. And I appreciate you allowing me to voice my opinion today.
Thank you. Sean Allen, followed by Jordan DeLazio.
Good morning, commissioners and staff. My name is Sean Allen. I'm a prior service military member of the United States Army. I'm also a store manager for Mr. Campbell's Brick and Mortar Stores. I just wanted to voice my opinion. As far as raising this age limit from 18 to 21, I don't believe that it is necessary. I think that grandfathering them in, as prior people have stated, to 19 would be effective. But coming from a prior service military standpoint, you're now turning 18- to 20-year-olds into criminals who can fight for your country. I fought for six years, and you're gonna tell, you're gonna tell military members that we can put a gun in your hand and you can go fight overseas, but you can't vape versus smoking cigarettes? And also, what about combustible tobacco products? So, we ban and raise the limit 18 to 21 for 18 to 20 to 21, but they cannot buy vape products, but they can buy cigarettes still? And to the effect of the 19, so 18-year-olds in schools are basically performing straw sales to sell to their buddies. So, yes, I believe that we should raise to 19. But in the same sense, due diligence to card and to make it aware that it's not vape stores, minus the one vape store that did an underage sale, that it's convenience stores, drugstores. And I think that's where it needs to be curbed, not denting into a market that is doing what they need to be. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan DeLazio, followed by Lawrence Sherro.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jordan DeLazio. I read this ordinance, I guess, last night or the night before, and just kinda going through it, I just wanna state, make a few points. And I don't actually think that any of you participated in writing it because it doesn't make sense to leave combustible tobacco products on the market. And you all know what they do to human beings, right? 1,300 people today will die from cigarettes. Just under half a million people a year will die from combustible tobacco products, right? And vapor products were created to end that problem. That's their invention. It's a disruptive technology, and it's its purpose. It was nothing, for no other purpose. So, I can't imagine that you guys would go, okay, so let's take the product that prevents and removes this deadly product from the market, right? We'll raise the age requirement for that, but leave the killer on the market. Makes no sense to me. So, that's why I can't believe that any of you participated in drafting this, because I just don't think that you guys would look at that and go, well, yeah, let's just leave cancer sticks on the market. But we'll take the other one that has proven to be no illnesses, no deaths, right, to date. And I know there's a CDC data out, right, where they're not ruling it out, right? But there's been no connection to it. Actually, they're changing, right, the narrative on it because they're doing their investigations. We all know now it's THC cartridges, okay? Illicit THC cartridges. Now, we don't sell those in the state of Florida or Hillsborough, as far as I know. It's not recreationally available. So, that's not a concern for us from a retail point of view. So, the state of Florida recognized and put in the 18 age, and I believe 2014. I echo the sentiments about if you have a right to do something now, you should maintain that right. It cannot be removed from you, right? And I guess the question is, what problem are you guys trying to solve? Like, what's the problem you guys have right now, right? And what are you trying to do to solve it? Because all you're gonna do is push the goalposts further away, right? And you'll have increased, right, the amount of potential underage use of this product. It's kind of illogical, right? I see people... I see people kind of looking at me like that. It's illogical. It doesn't make any sense. So, I think the question is, what are you trying to solve? What are you trying to quell here? What are you trying to tamp down, right? And we are all against, right, any underage use of any product that's not allowed to be used for someone who's below the age of 18, period. I was a kid. We were all kids. We were all teenagers. We all kind of messed around, I'm sure, things we shouldn't have done, right? Parenting, parenting, parenting. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura Cherup, followed by Kenneth Andrews.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Cherup. We, my family and I, have a store in South Tampa, South Tampa Vape, that we've had for a little over three years now. We are right outside of McDill Air Force Base, and 60 to 70% of our customer base is active-duty military. And if you change that age to make it illegal until they're 21, you're taking the right away from somebody who has signed up to serve and protect our country and put their life on the line, but they're not allowed to choose a 95% safer alternative that's out there on the market that's been proven by the Royal College of Physicians in Public Health, England. I'm sure I can speak for our industry as a whole. None of us want teens using it. That's not what it was about. It was for adults to have a safer alternative to smoking. We card at my store, and we are very prominent about doing that. All of the vape shop owners are very hard-pressed to make sure that there are no underage sales. I do believe that changing it to 19 would be a better alternative, because there are still kids, as somebody else said, in high school that still legally can purchase and have that option to present it to children or teens that are younger. But I don't believe that taking the rights away from somebody that already has it and making it illegal is right either. But I would appreciate the board's consideration on not changing it to 21 and making it illegal, especially for our military members and the people that serve and protect our country. Thank you.
Kenneth Andrews. Kenneth Andrews, followed by Shannon Whitezell.
Good morning. So, as far as the raising the age... I'm Kenneth Andrews. I am the manager for one of Mr. Campbell's brick and mortar shops in South Tampa, and I'm only a couple miles up from the last person that spoke. As far as raising the age for vaping to 21 but not combustible cigarettes goes, it makes no sense to me. Everything's already been covered as far as that goes. I do support the grandfathering in for anybody that is currently old enough to smoke, because otherwise, you're making people into addicts and criminals. As far as what's going on right now with underage minors smoking, there's no consequences to the child. There's no... You're not gonna get in trouble as the kid for smoking. There's no reason right now for any of the kids to be afraid of even getting caught. So, they're the ones that are gonna be trying to push harder and harder to get into the stores. Vape shops, for example, we card. I'd card you. There's different ways around this stuff. As far as restricting access to minors, my opinions are restrict online sales. I've never been carded online, ever. Didn't even know what I looked like. All they care about, do you have a debit card? Take it out of the grocery stores and convenience stores. That's how I was getting it when I was a teenager. Brick and mortar vape shops and smoke shops, I've always been carded. That's all I can think of right now.
Thank you. Shannon Whitezell. Followed by Terrell Bowen.
Good morning. My name is Shannon Whitezell. I'm a resident and small business owner here in Hillsborough County. Much of what I wanted to say was already said, so I'll try to keep this brief. Starting with Section 10 in the proposed ordinance, the conflict of state law, it states that "in the event of a conflict, Florida statute shall control." Well, there is already a Florida statute stating that the age is 18. So, that is a conflict, and it is ambiguous. As far as your whereas clauses, which are incorporated by reference, much of the information in there is just wrong. But it was, this was written before some more updates came out, so it will definitely need to be amended. They speak about the CDC lung illnesses and stuff like that, but those are caused, those illnesses were caused by black market THC products. The CDC actually recommends that consumers should not be buying products off the street, and that any adults using vapor products to quit smoking should not go back to smoking and should continue using the vapor products. So, there's much work to be done on this if you want to achieve the goal of preventing youth from accessing these products, but it, as written, will need to be amended. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrell Bowen.
Good morning. Commissioners, my name is TD Bowen, and I'm a father of three, and I live in Tampa Palms. And a lot of what, I mean, we're echoing the same thing here this morning, so... But I do have a few questions that I want to pose, not asking for answers now, but it's something to think about. Have we done an assessment and pulled the numbers for underage use in Hillsborough County? I think that's an important question, that we have to look at that first before arbitrarily going in and making a knee-jerk reaction at raising the age. I would like to see those numbers. Secondly, is there any evidence that raising the age from 18 to 21 is gonna fix the issue? And I've seen municipalities all over the United States address this and raise the age, and it's happened over the last two years, and we're not seeing any results. So, we have to figure out a different way to curb youth access. I believe also that this is a law enforcement issue. Can we have school resource officers team up and go after the offenders? You know? I truly believe it's a law enforcement issue, and stop it at its source. There's also a parenting issue involved with this. If we can make the parents responsible for their children's decisions, that would be good. Has somebody mentioned like a nicotine program? We all know selling products to underage youth is illegal, and our target with this ordinance is the kids. But what you're trying to do is target law-abiding citizens to solve the problem. And the real issue is not the age of 18 requirement, as retailers of products do a good job at restricting access already. We live in a day and age that technology has surpassed enforcement, I believe. This ordinance is not gonna do anything to stop youth access. Social media forums like Snapchat, Instagram, online sales websites are where these products are mainly being accessed, not storefronts. So, the ordinance is not going again to stop this from happening. These youth are gonna continue to be marketed to through those online channels, and vapor products were designed to eradicate combustible tobacco. So, if we are going to push this ordinance through, let's raise combustible cigarettes to 21 as well. I'm gonna close with, I hear a lot of policymakers that they just don't know enough about vaping and then try to make a knee-jerk reaction to pass bad policy. I'd like to leave this from the Heartland Institute, which is a guidebook for policymakers...
Thank you, sir.
...on tobacco harm reduction.
Thank you.
Can I leave this with you guys? Okay. Thank you.
Dolores Orlando, followed by Nicholas Orlando.
Good morning. I am Dolores Orlando, Treasurer of the Florida Smoke Free Association. The intent of this city ordinance is defined on page four, lines 17 through 20. Hillsborough County Commissioners intend to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens by inhibiting the sales, gifting, use, or possession of vapor-generating devices and/or associated vapor products used in such devices to persons under 21 years of age. As an association, we agree with the spirit of the proposed ordinance. However, clarity should be given to the body of the proposal. Page three, lines 10 through 12 state flavor products are more appealing to youth users. Fact, youth users are attracted to the buzz. They don't care if it's strawberry, tobacco, or even flavorless. This buzz is provided primarily by one product, Juul. By the way, Juul is also in part owned by Altria, aka Big Tobacco. What makes Juul so attractive is the excessive nicotine. Juul actually pulled their flavored pods from the market in March of 2019. Youth usage has not slowed down. Page three, line 13 and 14 states, "other substances included in vapor products included additives, chemicals, and oils." Fact, the ingredients in all vapor products are registered with the FDA. So, what is the recent scare about lung-related illnesses? Illegal THC cartridges have been highly circulated over the last 60 days. Vapor products have been on the American market since 2007. No illnesses have been reported in over a decade. Page four, lines one through six cites dated CDC information about lung illness. I have pulled the most current FDA report stating that the lung illnesses is a product of illegal THC cartridges. Page four, lines seven through nine indicates lung injury linked to use of vapor-generating electronic devices and vapor products by the Florida Department of Health. Fact, I pulled the Florida Department of Health report, and the DOH has not identified a cause per the September 20th report. Lastly, page four, lines 14 and 15 says, "businesses are offering the sale of vapor products that target teens." Fact, the targeting of youth users can primarily be attributed to the product that holds 70% of the market share, which again, is Juul. According to the FDA compliance inspections, less than 2% of violators were vape shops. The other 98% were convenience stores, gas stores, and big-box retailers. The Florida Association of Smoke, Florida Smoke Free Association is currently working on legislation for a 2020 session, and will be addressing some of these same concerns that have been brought today. We agree with the overall intent to raise the age to purchase of vapor products to 21. However, we respectfully request that you would comply that same theory to traditional cigarettes as well. Enforcement will be key, authority given to schools, and engaging the experts. We're here to help you.
Thank you.
And here are your reports.
Nicholas Orlando.
Good morning, and thank you, Commissioners. I'm with the, I'm Vice President of the Florida Smoke Free Association, and as you've heard all the prior speakers talk of all the positives about vapor products, there's something I need to let you know, that we represent 803 responsible retailers in the state of Florida. 60 of those are here in Hillsborough County. Those numbers are current. Pulled them last night. That is vapor-only retailers, not some of the stores you're seeing with other products in there. We've been around since 2014, protecting the rights of vaping adults to choose a less harmful alternative to combustible tobacco. And as Dolores mentioned, we are working with and supporting legislative processes this year. I'd like to just cover a couple of those today, hopefully within the time allotted. The first thing is increase penalties for underage sales. From a misdemeanor to a second degree, from a misdemeanor of a second degree to a misdemeanor of the first degree. For the first offense, and for the first time ever, impose a felony for second offense. We also want to increase the penalty of underage possession of nicotine products and dispensing devices. And I'll briefly just cover the topics, just so we don't get into too much. Impose criminal penalties against individuals who engage in two-party plan for illegal sale and purchase of a conspiracy with another. Penalties may become a felony. Create a new requirement whereby a retailer who engages in illegal sale of nicotine products or dispensing devices or conspiracy to engage in such sales must post a warning sign on their retail establishment. We've already found that most of these are C-stores, gas stations, and other places that youth have access to. That sign will read, "Warning to parents and guardians, this place of business has repeatedly violated Florida state laws, prohibiting the sale of nicotine dispensing devices to minors. Parents and guardians of minors are advised to consider to take this into consideration prior to entry." That will also keep youth out that may have to go into that gas station to purchase gasoline or drinks or whatever they grab. It prohibits the sale of nicotine dispensing devices and products from convenience stores. Major violator. Alternatively, following a second illegal sale of the retailer persons under the age of 21 are barred from even entering the retail premises. Want to create a new requirement that retailers of nicotine products dispensing devices provide training program for their sales associates. Again, vape shops are the ones doing the right thing. The other people aren't, because it's in and out. Empower schools and principals and teachers with additional tools to enforce against students vaping.
Thank you.
Nick Orlando.
Is there anyone else wishing to address item D2? Anyone else wishing to address item D2? Let's close the public hearing. We're gonna continue this until our November 6 meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
At 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. Mr. Merrell.
Public hearing D3, second of two required public hearings for school concurrency proportionate share agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services. Item B3 is a second of two required public hearings.
Excuse me. Ladies and gentlemen, we're still in the meeting. Would you please, when you leave, please exit quietly so we can continue our meeting? Thank you. Mr. Gormley.
Item B3 is a second of two required public hearings for a proportionate share agreement amongst the school board of Hillsborough County, Board of County Commissioners, and Ridgewood LLC. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the proposed Rhodey and Rhodes subdivision. The agreement will call for a payment of $863,568 to account for a shortfall of 17 elementary school student stations and 12 high school student stations. The contribution will go to the creation of student stations at Elementary School E in Waterset for the elementary students, and at Spoto High School for the high school students. Available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item D3? Anyone wishing to address item D3? Close the public hearing. Motion, Mr. Mermon.
Second.
Second, Mr. White to approve item D3. Seeing further discussion, please. Call your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
D4, another second required public hearing on school concurrency agreements.
Mr. Gormley.
Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item B4 is the second of two required public hearings for consideration of proportionate share agreement amongst the school board of Hillsborough County, Board of County Commissioners, and Bel Air Capital Group LLC. Purpose of this agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the LJ Lane subdivision. The agreement will call for a payment of $353,156 to provide 13 middle school seats at the middle school and high school TTT. Available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item D4? Anyone wishing to address item D4? Close the public hearing. Motion, Mr. Mermon. Second, Mr. White to approve item D4. Seeing further discussion, please. Call your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Merrell.
Final public hearing, D5, is the first of two required public hearings, so you'll take public comment and continue this to November 6 at 10:00 AM.
Mr. Gormley.
Commissioner, Adam Gormley, Development Services. Item B5 is a public hearing to consider, first of two required public hearings to consider proportionate share agreement amongst the school board of Hillsborough County, Board of County Commissioners... Board of County Commissioners, and Starlight Homes LLC. Purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the Arbor's Townhome Project. The agreement will call for a payment of six hundred seventy-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars, and will provide eighteen elementary school student seats at Elementary School E and eight middle school students at Middle School at High School TTT. Available for any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Gorman. This is the first of two public hearings. Anyone wishing to address item D5? Anyone wishing to address item D5? It's closed, this is the first public hearing. Close the public hearing. We'll bring this back at our November sixth meeting. Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Mr. Merrill?
Thank you.
Commissioners, that concludes your public hearings. It takes us to your ten-thirty time certant E1, which is a presentation on the IP Uptown District. Just as, by way of background, we've had a prior presentation concerning the Innovation District. So today, we'll have some presentations, brief presentations, by some key stakeholders in the proposed Innovation District. The same presentation will be made tomorrow morning to the Tampa City Council. And so, this is really just a conceptual presentation about the proposed district. We will be looking for some comments, obviously, from the board, but also at least a vote of confidence on the general concept so that we can begin to move forward with the many steps that are going to be needed to make this a reality. But Mark, are you going to open up? Okay.
Commissioner Sharp, welcome.
Board members, Mr. Chairman, honored to be here. Mark Sharp, Director of the Tampa Innovation Partnership. And what I'm going to give you briefly is just the team that we have behind us, the outcomes that we hope to produce, and then Mr. Bowen, who's the Chairman of the Tampa Innovation Partnership, will get up and briefly give a summary on the, what our ask is. First, the team, and I want to thank, we have the Chairman of the Tampa City Council, Louis Vieira, here with us.
Louis, Chairman.
We have a board member, Bill Carlson, from the City of Tampa, as well, here. We have our Chairman of the Tampa Innovation Partnership, which is Chris Bowen. I've got the Opportunity Zone Consultant, Mr. Bo Kemp. We have Sherry Donahue, who is a member of the Temple Terrace City Council here. We also have the President of the University of South Florida, the new president, Go Bulls, Dr. Steve Corral, here, and he'll be speaking briefly. We have the Chief Operating Officer for Moffett Cancer, Jack Koloski, who'll be speaking briefly. And we have the Director of the second-largest VA hospital in America, Mr. Joe Battle, the James A. Haley Hospital, and he'll be speaking briefly. Mr. Chairman, what we are going to be presenting to you, and I've seen the slide, I'm not sure if it shows up, this will be the largest economic development project in Hillsborough County history. Our anchors, Advent Health, and we have a representative from Advent Health here, Melanie Brown. James A. Haley Hospital, Moffett Cancer, USF, Busch Gardens, along with our other members, Yingling, Mosey, University Area Community Development Corporation, and Sarah Combs is here, and she'll be speaking as well. And I'm honored to say that UACDC, who's been a member of our organization, Ms. Combs will be asked at our next Executive Board meeting to join the Executive Board of the Tampa Innovation Partnership. So what we're putting here before you ultimately will be the plans for an economic redevelopment project for the University Area. What we're creating is an ecosystem. And an ecosystem means that you don't just have strong anchors, and that's critical. And if you do an inventory of innovation districts all across America, you'll find we have probably some of the most important and powerful anchors ourselves up in the University Area, all within a half mile of each other. But creating an ecosystem means that you've got a mobility plan. It means that you have a plan for housing, whether it's affordable workforce or market-rate housing. It means you have a plan for job creation and job training. And that's going to be our priority. We've heard it said to a lot of folks, what are we trying to do? Is this about real estate? And even Mr. Barton, when Mr. Barton, the Economic Development Director, came up and spoke before you in 2015, he said, "This is not about real estate, it's about people. It's about lifting people up." So we're going to create an uptown ecosystem. We also have representatives here from the Florida Department of Transportation, Ed McKinney, who'll be partnering with us. We have the Planning Commission, and their director will be partnering with us, and Hart. So to wrap through quickly, while we're talking, there are major economic development projects that are ongoing. If you take a drive up there, Advent Health, right now, they've already put two hundred million dollars into their facility with the ER and the women's center. Now they're building the six-story surgical tower. Moffett, in 2007, the board approved a forty-five-million-dollar deal for the M2GEM project. They recently announced a partnership with the Hearst Foundation for seventy-five million dollars, and now plans for a new four-hundred-million-dollar hospital right across the street from where the M2GEM building sits on McKinley. Yingling. Yingling brews beer in Pottsville, and they're here in Tampa. We met with them. They wanted to become part of our organization. They met with the USF, developed a powerful relationship, and the Sun Dome became the Yingling Center. Now Yingling has plans to go before the City Council with a sixty-five-million-dollar plan for hotel, restaurant, and meeting space. The Mall, you'll hear briefly from our Chairman, Mr. Bowen, who represents the Mall. The Mall will no longer be a mall. Mall will be gone. What you're going to have is an urban village. There'll be stores, there'll be retail, but you'll have a lot of other activity within walking distance of the USF Research Park and the university. And it's within an opportunity zone. The James A. Haley Hospital, as I said, second-largest in the nation, the largest polytrauma facility, with a one hundred and forty-five-million-dollar tower that's going up right now along Bruce B. Downs. And then the USF Research Park, and we're honored to have Allison Madden with the USF Research Park here. They have plans for a new forty thousand square-foot laboratory and office space on Fowler Avenue and McKinley. This is just some of the development that's occurring in our area. We need a plan to tie it all together, and that's why I'm here. And I'm now going to introduce Mr. Bowen, who's the Chairman of the Tampa Innovation Partnership. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Bowen.
Good morning. Chris Bowen, I'm the current Chairman of the Innovation Partnership Executive Board. I'm also the Chief Development Strategist for the University Mall Redevelopment Project. Over sixty years ago, or over the past sixty years, an extraordinary urban innovation community has been organically growing and developing before our very eyes, only a short distance from here in Uptown. Incredible things are occurring up there all the time. The local resident institutions and corporate players have garnered national and international acclaim and have made some very amazing breakthroughs in their respective fields. Yet, our local commercial and residential neighborhoods do not reflect those incredible accomplishments and do not benefit to a significant degree yet from them. It's time to change that. It's time to take strategic but underutilized assets like the one-hundred-acre University Mall property and marry its redevelopment potential with our community's initiatives on a much, much grander scale through building a world-class innovation district that everyone will know about and everyone can participate in. It's time. It's time to leverage the nationally significant players in our district, which represent the heart of what is already one of the most significant medical and technology research clusters in Florida. Arti Management's multi-billion-dollar, seven-million-square-foot-proposed innovation community development at the Mall site, and other investment patterned after it in the Uptown District, will start to build pathways down at the street and neighborhood level to connect our residents to the many opportunities that naturally flow within a successful innovation This work over the next few years will set the framework for a world-class innovation community, which will further inform and influence compatible, thoughtful, and beneficial development all along Fowler Avenue and throughout the related commercial and residential neighborhoods within our district from Fletcher to Bush and 275 to 75 and far, far beyond those borders. The Innovation Partnership has secured the national expertise of Fagri Baker Daniels' National Consulting Practice and its Senior Director, Bo Kemp, to assist us in developing a multifaceted Opportunity Zone investment program. The program is being designed specifically for our local market and with the Innovation District's commercial and community development core values in mind. At this time, I'd like to invite Bo to come up and tell you a little bit more about this initiative. Thank you.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Bo Kemp. I'm Senior Director at Fagri Baker Daniels. For the last twenty-plus years, I have focused on large-scale projects and redevelopment around the country, having both served as Deputy Mayor for the City of Newark under Cory Booker, but also working with states, counties, and cities around the country. I'm really excited about this particular project, and I'm eager to have the chance to talk to you individually, as time permits. I'll be short, given that we have a number of people that are going to speak. There are really two major issues that are important for us to take advantage of opportunity zones. Opportunity zones happens to be potentially one of the largest economic development programs in the history of the United States. There's six trillion dollars of capital that's in the markets that, right now, has gains that folks are looking to take advantage of. And so every community is effectively competing against the entire country, in fact, the entire world, to attract those dollars. Our hope is not only to attract those dollars for the area in specific consultation now uptown, but for Hillsborough County broadly. There are two really important issues for our success. We're trying to attract capital to these low-income areas that have, in many cases, not had the kind of investment that they've needed over a long period of time, but we're trying to make sure that we do that in a way that encourages social equity and discourages displacement. And in order for us to do that effectively, that requires us to be very holistic and work with all of the stakeholders. And that includes at the community level. A lot of the work that I've done around the country has been specifically working with community organizations to ensure that as that kind of growth occurs, we do it in such a way that encourages the kind of attainable housing and other elements that are important for the community that currently live there, so that they are not displaced as the growth that comes that brings all of the other benefits that everybody wants, hopefully, will happen in a short period of time. So with that, I'm going to turn over my time to, oh, Ms. Combs, Sarah Combs from AUCDC. Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Combs.
Good morning, County Commissioners. I am beyond excited to be standing in front of you this morning as a partner in this initiative, representing the voice of the community. For over twenty years, the University Area CDC has championed positive change in the economic, educational, and social levels of the community through youth programs, adult education, affordable housing, workforce, community engagement, and empowerment. Today, we have a wonderful opportunity to bring this community forward as an intentional part of the redevelopment plan. And by including the residents of this community and looking at them as a strength opposed to a weakness, real transformative change can truly begin. We strongly believe that we can create a plan to show how redevelopment can happen while ensuring that the residents have a part in this plan without displacement. One tool that we will be implementing is our community benefits program, coupled with our land banking initiative, to ensure that our holistic approach to community development, the plan that we've been working on, continues throughout this redevelopment effort. You know, it's important because we made a promise to this community. We made a promise to be a beacon of hope, a safe haven for those who needed a voice. And it's important for me that we continue to champion that. And as fearless leaders of University Area residents, we will continue to empower them with the essential tools needed to attain better jobs, better health, and most importantly, better futures for their children. And that's, I think, something that we really, truly all want, and we can come together on common ground to achieve. Today, we're talking about more than creating positive change in our community. We're talking about creating a plan to transform, not just now, but the lives of generations to come. That is why I'm here this morning, very excited and eager for this to take place, and that is why I ask that you support our efforts as we come together to create an inclusive community that we can be proud of. So I thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
So the game plan. I'll go through this pretty quickly, I apologize, but we have some people we'd like to introduce here just after this. Some objectives that we need to address for the next six months to twelve months include standing up a working group committee of Tampa, IP anchors, the county, city of Tampa, UACDC, Hart, FDOT, perhaps others, to craft a set of guiding principles. Quantifying some core measurable outcomes. Making sure we have identified and engaged all the key stakeholders and reached memorandum of understanding built around the core values and guiding principles. Establish an entity for governance. Establish a scope of work and timelines. Formulating a district development plan. Some of the aspects of the development plan. An agreement between the county and city on the comprehensive plan amendment process for the district. Set of goals for economic outcomes. Addressing zoning and land use issues. Transfer of development rights. Adopt an opportunity zone work plan. Adopt a community engagement plan stressing social impact. Target some key outcomes, urban landscape, including lighting and sidewalks to bike paths, parks, and connectivity. Defining the boundaries for the district's initiatives and crafting a phased approach for tax increment financing that will present to the B OCC and City Council for adoption by November 2020. Regular reports to the B OCC and City Council throughout. Now I'd like to invite some of my colleagues from the Executive Board to briefly explain how this matters to their institutions. First, we'll have Dr. Stephen Corral, President of University of South Florida, followed by Moffett Hospital President Jack Koloski, then Director of the James A. Haley Veterans Hospital, Joe Battle. And right after Mr. Battle, I'll invite Council Chairman, City of Tampa Council Chairman Louis Vieira to say a few words. And then after him, I will pop back up to you, and I will provide what our request is for today. It's a very, very quick, very brief one. Thank you.
Mr. President, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Steve Corral, and I'm the President of the University of South Florida, and I'm a proud new resident of Hillsborough County. So thank you for having me. I'm here today to voice my deep commitment to this proposal. This may be the most important economic development initiative in the history of Hillsborough County, and so I'm very, very enthusiastic about it. The university is eager to play an anchor role in this initiative. As you know, we are a human capital magnet. We bring in lots of new students and faculty and staff and educate them. We produce research and creative activity, all of which we hope benefits the broader Tampa Bay region. And so it's very exciting to be a part of this and to be working with Chris and Mark and the others. I'm reminded of other examples in other cities. So you may have followed the partnership between the University of Southern California and Urban Los Angeles, which has been very successful. You might have also followed the University of Pennsylvania's relationship with West Philadelphia, also very successful. And then, of course, we know about all the other cases of Silicon Valley and Kendall Square in Boston and Research Triangle Park and so on. And so, in my experience, in every one of those cases, the university has to play an anchor role. And the University of South Florida is eager to play that role in this initiative, and we appreciate your support for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioners, my name is Jack Koloski. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the Moffett Cancer Center. I'm reminded that I am one of, the only one, that's an original member of this initiative. And we're no less enthusiastic about this than when we started this. There is a great opportunity in this community to develop this area in a much more profound way. And Moffett, with its sixty-five-hundred employees and over sixty thousand unique patients that we serve every year... every year, has a vested interest in the continued development of this, and so we would appreciate your support for this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, how are you today? Good to see you. My name is Joe Battle. I'm the Director of the James A. Haley VA Hospital and Clinics, and I am also here to voice my support for this Innovation District and the proposals being put forth. This Innovation District is important to Hillsborough County. It will be an economic engine for the county. It will also improve the community, and because the VA is inside this Innovation District, it's also very good for veterans. And that is, the point I come from, is we do lots of innovative things at our hospital, and having an Innovation District to work within only enhances that, so veterans benefit. We're also part of the community. We're not just this federal reservation over on Bruce B. Downs all unto ourself. We believe we're part of the community, and we wish to act as part of the community. And we intend to partner as fully as possible with all the initiatives going on with the Innovation District. It's good for the community, and it's good for veterans. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real pleasure to be here, everybody. Louis Viera, Tampa City Council. I just wanted to put in my two cents very briefly. I just want to say that as the District 7 City Councilman, as the Chair of City Council, I know that we're all very excited about what we have coming forward here. We're excited about engaging in a process that I ultimately believe, and I have every reason to believe, that all of my colleagues on Tampa City Council believe, will have a real, robust development type of an investment here in the USF area. And when we talk about redevelopment, I just want to talk about some of the things that I think that we all agree on, which is this isn't redevelopment in terms of moving people out of the USF area. This is really reinvestment, which is about reinvesting in the area that has lacked investment and lacked attention for too long, and using the skills and the resources that we have and the people who live in this area to make this area fully reach its potential. That's what this is all about. So I'm very excited about this, and I also wanted to salute also my friend, Mr. Mark Sharp, for his longtime work in this. Mark has been the voice in the wilderness on this issue, and I really have faith that this is our time where this issue is going to come to fruition. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Viera. Reinvestment for many, many years to come. That's what we're looking at. In order to execute the game plan described earlier and take full advantage of the Opportunity Zone benefits, we are asking you today for three things. Conceptual support of the approach we've described. Input on the core values of the, for the Uptown Innovation District. And direction to staff to draft a memorandum of understanding for collaborating with the key stakeholders. So with that, we'd like to answer some of the, some questions you may have and hear from, from you about what, what you see in terms of guiding principles and values for the Uptown Innovation District.
Thanks, Mr. Board. Anyone else, Mr. Sharp? Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's it?
That's it, yes.
All right. Let me, let me say this. I've been involved with this area since 1970. When I first went to USF as a student, and then the draft was coming along, I volunteered to Air Force, and I came back to USF. I remember when it was a dirt road. Fowler ended at 30th Street, and went to University of South Florida, it was a dirt road. I remember the sandstorms at USF because the buildings weren't there, the wind would start blowing. It was a military bombing, whatever it was. I remember the sandstorms we used to have on that campus. I also remember working at the University of South Florida and having to bring in prominent professors and not bringing them down Florida Avenue, I mean, down Fowler Avenue, taking them down I-4 and bringing them in the back way of USF. I remember Suitcase City, and that name is gone now. We're not going to ever call it Suitcase City again.
Exactly.
That, that day is over. This is all about bringing in businesses, bringing in a lifestyle for those people out there that need the uplifting that for so many years that were downtrodden, and that Suitcase City name was really a stigmatism that no one liked. So now we have an opportunity with the University of South Florida, my alma mater, I'm a veteran, so the hospital, I'm a three-time cancer survivor, Moffett saved my life, and building, building up a community that everyone can be proud of and bringing in what is very well needed out there. As someone said, we've seen the Silicon Valley, we've seen what happened at Los Angeles with USC in Los Angeles, we've seen what happened in Houston with the University of Houston, the former president, a president at the University of Houston was at the University of South Florida. So this is something that is so grandly needed in that area, and I'm so glad to be a part of it as a County Commissioner. However, I'm going to be leaving here in a year, but I won't be done. I'll still be working there, because Mark will continue to drink that coffee, be as hyper as he is right now, and will have my phone number. So I am so grateful to have this, this part of happening in the University of the area. So I'm going to make a motion that, could you put those, those requests on the screen again, so I get them right?
Yes, sir. Today's question. There you go.
That we accept the conceptual support for this approach, that we be heavily involved as a commission individually in this approach, that the input and core values and guiding principles that may come forth today, after I make my motion, you can make amendments, whatever the case may be, be part of that, and direct staff to draft a memorandum of understanding between whomever we have to do that to make this thing happen. This is important. This is highly important.
We have, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, and I heard several seconds, so I'm not sure I got them all. Commissioner Merman and Commissioner Overman. And let's see here, we'll begin with Commissioner White. You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. I'll just open by saying that I'm supportive of the plan, and I'd like to focus on one bullet point that was included in the presentation, and that's the Transfer of Development Rights Program. This could allow this outstanding plan to develop while providing rural landowners to send credits to this district to promote urbanized growth there in this district while preserving the rural character of the sending area in such a way that rural landowners could be given the opportunity to participate in the marketplace. This board has expressed a keen interest in better growth management and a desire to promote diverse lifestyle choices that consist of rural, suburban, and urban lifestyle choices. We have a golden opportunity to utilize tools that allow us as policymakers, working together with our private sector partners, to steer growth to areas that are in the best interest of all parties while simultaneously preserving an array of lifestyle choices, specifically a rural choice. And as you all know, this is the most difficult choice to preserve in a metropolitan county like ours. Commissioner Sharp, I would like to thank you and your fellow stakeholders for weaving a TDR concept into your plans. I would also like to thank county staff for working with me to incorporate this idea into the plan. The idea admittedly is still high-level, and there's still much work to be done on a TDR concept. Stakeholders in a potential sending zone in rural Hillsborough County would still need further engagement, but I'm confident that if the free-market economics numbers work, that this has the potential to be an award-winning planning exercise. So I very much look forward to further development of your plan, Commissioner Sharp, and fellow stakeholders. As a core value, I would very much like for a core value to be that you support this board in good planning and better growth management and help us to preserve that array of lifestyle choices that we've talked about. And I feel so strongly about this and see such potential here that I'd like to make an amendment to the motion on the floor, and that would be for the MOU to include the TDR concept and bring rural landowners in my proposed sending area to the table as potential stakeholders.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Smith.
And I'll, I'll just close, Madam Vice Chair, by saying, Commissioner Sharp, you have a lot of proverbial big boys at the table in your plan, and, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that Mosaic owns the lion's share of the land in an area that I have in mind as a sending area, and that could be a great party, that's a sophisticated party to have at the table that, that could, could work with you on developing such a plan.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We have a law, we have several Commissioners who would like to speak. I'm just wondering if, who would like to speak to the amendment? Would you like to speak to the amendment?
Did you get a second? Yeah, you got a second. No.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm really, I was also very excited to see TDR mentioned in their proposals, and just want to mention, we recently created a new comp plan designation, comprehensive plan designation for this area to increase the density to 35 per acre. So it could be a great send, receiving area. I was just speaking with the BLM Civic Association a couple of days ago, they're wearing, that's right, and about the exciting possibilities of, of transfer of development rights from our rural area to this area in particular. And so it could, it could be an opportunity to provide benefits outside, you know. I'll just say, you've forged a very impressive coalition, all of you, working together in the university area, and I know that you have a commitment to, from several of these members of your coalition, to reach outside your own entities, to raise up the whole community and make sure that the whole community in that area benefits. But this transfer of development rights could be an opportunity for you to provide benefits to communities well beyond your borders through, for the whole county, and help us really as we face the challenges of managing growth through the whole county. So happy to support this. I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for you to have big impact.
And Commissioner Overman, I understand you want to speak to the amendment?
And I'll keep it brief. This is a perfect example where TDRs or Transfer of Development Rights makes sense. We've had a couple of other opportunities to use TDRs where it didn't seem to make sense to me, but in an area that has such great opportunity and potential for not only making sure that our community is served well, for maximizing the use of our, our resources and infrastructure dollars, I think this is a great opportunity to have a TDR in place that, that makes sense for our overall county. So thank you for adding that amendment. I'll support it.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak to the amendment? Seeing no further comments, please record your vote.
On the amendment.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And we'll get back to the original motion now. Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. I, Mark, you've come a long way. You know, working with him for eight years was really a great experience, and wish you all could have been here. Probably one of the most positive, energetic people you will ever meet, and he is focused. That's what I like about this plan. It's very focused, very definite, defined. What I like, and I think it'll, will really give so much, that return on investment that, you know, all the expectations, the objectives and the goals, community engagement, all that's very clear. But what I see is it, it's that node. Remember the Economic Prosperity Committee? Commissioner Miller and I co-chaired that. We talked about these nodes and developing these nodes so that we would have clear transportation lines, but what happens outside that node is critical. And that's where I think this plan, you know, I kind of, I do a lot of fundraising for people, so I think what it does is it's really going to help bring people to the table so that you will have all this, you know, ongoing development outside this, your node. And I think that's what is so appealing for anybody that's, you know, looking at this project. So I just commend you. I know you've worked hard, Mark, and you're probably going to take a big, deep sigh of relief after this. Well, we're just getting started, but after today. But, you know, I really think the world of you, and I commend you and your team, the whole team. Dr. Corral, I know you're, this is new, all new to you, what's happening here, but this is, I'll tell you what, this is such a great start, and it's really something that can be built on. So congratulations.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
I wasn't on the commission when these ideas got started, but I, Mark and I've been whispering in each other's ears for what feels like decades. I am thoroughly excited about this idea and this opportunity, and I am not only excited about the stakeholders in general, but the, you know, the commitment to the community that is there is so important. Bringing Bo Kemp to the table to really recognize the critically importance, critical importance of looking at all of our resources and infrastructure opportunities, as I would call it, as part of the planning process. I can't tell you how excited I am about that, because I believe that what's critically important is what you've asked for, is guiding principles and core values in how to make what has been on the table for a while a reality for the people who live in that area and have been fighting in the, for their communities for so long. As I celebrate Commissioner Miller's efforts to see this come to fruition, I want to bring to the table, and I'm not sure it needs to be an amendment, but a recommendation on the core values. I'd like to suggest that, some of which Sarah Combs mentioned, and then the investment that the county has made in the applied engineering, you know, effort, what we're seeing in the partnership with USF, as well as the other medical and other private enterprise investments, that we make sure that equity be part of a core value in this process, to protect against displacement of the people in the community while creating opportunities for the people in the community. And I anticipate that that'll be part of your, not only your plan, but also part of the Community Benefits Agreement. Making sure that we address those transit-dependent populations that live in that area, because it has been one of our only transit-rich environments. Along, you know, Florida and Nebraska has been a core area, but what we see coming in the area of transit investments going, moving forward, as well as transportation investment on Fowler Avenue. You know, I see Fowler Avenue as a perfect boulevard concept, where we create walkable communities, invest in our communities to create business entries, opportunities along that corridor that really support the community that lives there. So there's a great opportunity for affordable housing and workforce housing development that is desperately needed in that area, as we heard earlier in the public comment on another issue. That transit-oriented development, zoning, and land use needs to be a core element associated with, in partnership with the Opportunity Zone. So working with the city to make sure that we're looking at those opportunities and how we can invest in the infrastructure will be critical. We have a significant, which is sort of on an item later, a significant incidence of septic tank in that area that is going to require the county's commitment to infrastructure to this community in order to have it work well. So I am hoping that that be included in the MOUs with the county stakeholders, but look forward to seeing the wonderful things that can occur in this area utilizing, you know, the, the transfer of development rights, but also to protect those communities. know, the transfer of development rights, but also to protect those communities as part of the overall guiding principles. So thank you so much for bringing this to the table. Thank you to USF for becoming a stakeholder in this. It's been critically important that that be part of the equation, and I love the fact that we're moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you all. I just like to say, there's, I've heard so many comments, I'd just like to reiterate, and I know that I actually was an aide here when Mark was Commissioner. So yes, I agree with you. Commissioner Merman, Mark, it's so impressive, and I know you've been just incredibly dedicated and hardworking and just have been years and years in the making. So thank you for that. Commissioner Miller, it was lovely to hear some of the history back personal when there was nothing at the USF area. Actually, when you were even talking about, I was thinking back to, as I understand, this is just from memory, that Congressman, then Congressman, Sam Gibbons, dedicated that property to becoming the University of South Florida. So it's just, to think that it was just empty land with dirt roads through it and has come so far, it's wonderful to hear that we are going to reach a new place with this piece of such potential in the USF area to become something very, very wonderful with all those elements of equity and appropriate land use and transit. And I just, again, I would also like to recognize that we do have our challenges there besides the ones that are so obvious that have been put out here, but that we are, to a great degree, shockingly, still on septic in areas of the county and city, apparently, in that area that will certainly impede opportunities that we may have to do the kind of intense development. So I think we have to really look at that as a basic predicate to, as we redevelop that area, the septic and wastewater have to be dealt with. You know that I was very thrilled when I saw on your very first map that you put up there that the CSX line along Fowler Avenue was included. Thank you very much. I want so much to see that activated. It's a perfect route with a perfect right-of-way right there. I've stood on it at Fowler and 30th and looked right across at the university, going right down to Ebor to downtown. Such an opportunity that few communities have. So I think it's really exciting to be looking at that as a transit center, as it should be, and we have such an opportunity in that. Also, I know that Ms. Combs had, you know, I've looked at some of the development that she's put out, or the mapping, or vision, and we could use quite a few sidewalks, apparently, throughout that area that, you know, as we move forward and as you recognized with Fowler Avenue, yes, being a boulevard design and entryway and a gateway that we can be proud of when we bring people down to the university, that community, I know, could use quite a bit of infrastructure in terms of sidewalks, as well as water and wastewater. And finally, as I said, the CSX tracks, a transit center there, mobility is, we have such opportunities to make that such a wonderful place for people to live and a place where we keep not only the communities that are there, but afford, avail it to other new affordable housing and other opportunities, but keep it in place as a wonderful place for all kinds of people of all kinds of incomes and all kinds of diversity in many ways to live. I'm very, very excited about the possibilities here. Thank you also, Dr. Correll, that the university is taking place in this, the hospitals being part of this. It's just really so exciting. So I'm all on board, can't wait to see what comes out. I appreciate all the work and efforts that everybody's put into it. I do think it is a really incredible opportunity for the future, a real, something for us to really be proud of as we work forward in developing and growing.
Thank you.
So with that being said, is there anyone else? No other comments? So we have a motion by Commissioner Miller. It was seconded by Commissioners Overman and Merman. Seeing no further comments, please record your vote on the main motion.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I would just ask one thing. There's a lot of people in this room who've supported this effort. It's a team effort. Everyone stepped up together. So if you could just stand, those of you that are part of the team, I appreciate it. We know we've got Sheila Patel, who's Chair of the Cell, that we've got Community Enrichment Lab, many others, great team. They're all shy, but everyone's part of this. Thank you very much. We are honored. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill.
Thank you all, too. Appreciate it.
Mr. Merrill?
That takes us to the 11:00 AM time certens E2 and B3. E2 is the special appearance by Martine Collier.
Can we hold up a minute, please?
Yep.
Hold on, hold on.
Make it go forward. Just hit the arrow.
Okay. Hold on a minute. Let's kind of clear the room out, and then we'll get to you.
I'm sorry?
We're going to hold.
Too close?
We're going to clear the room out, and then you can start. It's kind of noisy right now.
Too close?
You're fine. You're fine. Just waiting for the room to be cleared.
Okay. So anyway, good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you today the accomplishments of the Arts Council during the last half of the fiscal year. During this time, we have been very focused on achieving the remaining outcomes of our strategic plan, which was developed in 2017 to guide our program and activities until Perhaps the biggest news in the last six months is that in July of 2019, the Arts Council moved its offices to the 20th floor of the county center. The cost savings made possible by this move are significant and in complete alignment with our strategic plan goal of allowing the Arts Council to operate more efficiently and effectively in the delivery of its programs and services. This move also increased the accessibility of the Arts Council to people with disabilities, another goal of the strategic plan. The move also impacted our grant-making programs as it allowed us to hold our grant panel meetings in the 26th floor conference room of the county center with microphones to enhance the experience for grant applicants attending these meetings. In August, we also launched a new grant program for 2020, which allows colleges and universities to apply for project support for cultural initiatives that benefit the citizens of Hillsborough County. We awarded a total of $320,650 in cultural development grants to local cultural organizations this year. We also awarded $29,325 in professional development grants to 16 emerging and established artists for some very exciting and career-enhancing purposes. One example on the slide here is a grant recipient who used his grant funds to purchase a special lens to assist him in chronicling the homeless population of Tampa. Proceeds from this book of photographs he took with this new lens go to support a local homeless charity, and that's just one story out of 16. And in the inaugural year of our new Community Arts Impact Grant, designed to achieve the strategic plan goal of greater cultural equity, we awarded $64,350 to a wide variety of local nonprofits. Designed to be a more accessible source of funding for smaller and emerging organizations, this new funding source allowed many nonprofits to become first-time Arts Council grantees. We were pleased to officially launch our new arts education website in June of 2019, another goal of our strategic plan. This online portal serves not just as a resource for parents, teachers, homeschoolers, and after-school programs, but also provides an opportunity for the teaching artists of Hillsborough County to better market their services to schools throughout the county and the entire region. Also, in our continuing efforts to assist artists in the community to become more successful at the business of art, we hosted an arts business workshop in September at Hillsborough Community College through a partnership with the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center. In conducting our research in 2017 to inform our strategic plan, we discovered great community interest in having some sort of guide to the nonprofit cultural sector in Hillsborough County. So achieving this also became a goal of our strategic plan. In September of 2019, we completed our third edition of the guide, and each year it has expanded in scope and number of listings. It is widely utilized by realtors, hospitals, and colleges as a relocation tool and is available to the public in all Hillsborough County libraries and